Good evening. Today is July 7, 2022, and I will call to order the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting. And with that, if you'll stand, Mike Allen is going to lead us in prayer, and Amy Wise in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Definitely Father Lord, we just thank you for this day. Father God, we just thank you for the needed rain we got today. Father God, just continue to lead God and direct our city and lead God and direct our commission tonight, Father, to further the town. Father God, just look out for the best interest of the citizens and the town of Smyrna. Father, we just love you. We thank you for the blessings that you bestow on each day. Father God, and just continue to lead God and direct us in all we do in our walk. In Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike and Amy. Our next agenda item is citizens' comments. Kevin?
It's done tonight.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item number four, approval of the minutes of the June 2, 2022 meeting. Counselor, the meeting notes in order?
In order as to form, Chairman.
Commission, have you had a chance to review? And are there any questions?
We approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We'll now move on to old business. The first item is a rezoning request. Peter Gay Taylor, 10259 Old Nashville Highway, rezoning C4 to PRD.
This is a rezoning request at 10259 Old Nashville Highway, just kind of south and east of the Stewart Valley Drive intersection there. It's about 4.38 acres, currently zone C4. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, C4, R1, and the Lennox PUD. Land use plan is kind of the Old Nashville corridor area, which would kind of support a mix of retail and personal service uses, as well as townhomes and attached residential could be in this area as well. Major threat fair plan does show Old Nashville Highway as a minor arterial and adequate roadway does exist there for that street. This request of PRD is for 40 townhomes. That is a change from when it was originally submitted. It was 50 townhomes originally, and it has been reduced to 40, as well as the overall layout has changed quite a bit and that sort of thing as well. We had a few comments that were outstanding. One, we did ask them to revise the side and rear architectural elevations, which they have done that now. We can remove that comment. The elevations are all, the fronts are a mix of brick and stone and concrete siding, and then the side and rear would be all concrete siding. We did ask them to resubmit the auto turn. Our fire department did have some concerns about that. We have not received that revised auto turn yet. But that was, and then the other comments that are left are all from Consolidated Utility District. Main issue there is regarding fire flow, and that has, they do have adequate fire flow here for this type of development, so that is not a problem for this area. This is one that was submitted a couple months ago and was deferred a couple times at the developer's request, and so this has been first resubmitted now for your review. Some of the concerns we had before did get addressed with some of the layout. As far as the road layout, has all been taken care of and addressed. The parking, adequate parking is provided as far as two per unit in the driveways, as well as some, quite a bit of 20 or one or 22 parking spaces kind of scattered throughout the site for guests. They're meeting all of requirements as far as our open space requirements and that sort of thing as well. One thing I will point out, these are all basically rear loaded, as far as from a alley-loaded units, the fronts will face Old Nashville Highway or face the internal private streets or the open spaces. And so there will all be, none of the front doors will be facing anybody's back door, I guess you would say, like we had discussed on another similar type of development before. These are all, will either be facing, again, out or facing those internal streets or facing open space, so. I think that's what I've got.
Questions for Kevin?
Just to confirm, you said the only outstanding issue on the town side is the fire department turnarounds?
Right. Which we could look at again if this is approved at site plan as well. I mean, so that's certainly something that can still be addressed. It's not a, it's not something that I would, I would say hold up any recommendation based on that, because it's something that can still be looked at and reviewed, just as it could be a condition of the approval, a recommendation, rather.
Kevin, what's staff thought with this development in relation to surrounding zoning?
Well, you have the adjoining property to the northwest is C4, is where the, there's a church there currently. Across Old Nashville Highway, the immediately in that area is largely residential. There is some commercial at the intersection there with Stewart Valley, commercial zoning and commercial uses, which would be across from the most extreme northern, most part of this property. The Lennox PUD has a mix of single-family detached and attached, both townhomes, both in that development. Kind of mixed, interspersed within there and mixed. I think the closest units to this are all detached, single-family, but there is townhomes in there, so. So it's, there's really a mixture of things, I guess, mixture of uses and mixture of zoning. So I mean, it fits the overall land use plan. Again, with that, again, that mixture of uses is what we looked at on Old Nashville Highway.
Where do you see currently the potential issues with the auto turn for the fire apparatus? If you could kind of just talk us through that?
Yeah, I think, I don't know if I can cover this on the fact or not, there's, as I recall, I think it was more in the, in the, where the turns are made, being made, I think there was concerns, there was a couple places where the, the truck would be not leaving, well, not going to be running over a curb or anything like that, but maybe part of the apparatus might be extending over a curb or something like that, and to, or into the parking areas where there's some of those guest parking areas are, and some of the turns, I don't remember exactly where. They've got adequate turnarounds on all the dead ends and that sort of thing. It's not a concern there.
So the alleys or roadway, this would all be private, correct?
Yes.
And then I haven't looked at a plan yet, but as far as widths there, are we at 22 feet?
22 or maybe even 24.
Okay. Including what we're going, what we're calling the alleys behind?
Yeah, all the private streets are 24 feet.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And those are two-car parking pads?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have the auxiliary parking that I, that I see.
Right.
Okay. Other questions from the commission or comments?
I have a comment or question, because what we're voting on right here is just the rezoning part, because what, well, what I'm not seeing is, you know, the size of townhomes, I mean, which we usually see at some point.
It's on the front page.
They're rendered in there.
Yeah, there's some renderings. It's, the averages they're saying are 1850 to 2200. It's on the very front page of the larger document. And then we do have the renderings, which kind of show the, the look.
I think where Amy was heading, she's saying, okay, we're looking at this from a rezoning to a PRD. Would this include, in this approval, not only the rezoning of the PRD, but what's included within the PRD itself?
Right. And that's, you know, this, this, if you do recommend approval and council approves it, everything that's in this packet of information is included, including the, you know, the number of units, but also the size of the units, the amount of open space, the parking, all those things that's included.
And it looks like the average unit size is 1850 square feet to 2200 square feet.
Right.
Other questions or comments?
I have a comment or question, because what we're voting on right here is just the rezoning part, because what, well, what I'm not seeing is, you know, the size of townhomes, I mean, which we usually see at some point.
It's on the front page.
They're rendered in there.
Yeah, there's some renderings. It's, the averages they're saying are 1850 to 2200. It's on the very front page of the larger document. And then we do have the renderings, which kind of show the, the look.
I think where Amy was heading, she's saying, okay, we're looking at this from a rezoning to a PRD. Would this include, in this approval, not only the rezoning of the PRD, but what's included within the PRD itself?
Right. And that's, you know, this, this, if you do recommend approval and council approves it, everything that's in this packet of information is included, including the, you know, the number of units, but also the size of the units, the amount of open space, the parking, all those things that's included.
And it looks like the average unit size is 1850 square feet to 2200 square feet.
Right.
I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second? Second. Motion and second to approve with staff comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Our next item is a site plan. Eli Waldron, boat and RV storage, 1093 Industrial Road. Owner developer, Eli Waldron.
This is the, a similar plan to what y'all saw last month that was deferred. We had a couple concerns last month. I'm not sure about fire department, but we, regarding the elevations for sure. Gone back forth a little bit with the applicant on this to revise some things. Couple other changes have been made. The, there were three buildings, or two buildings, rather, that was split down the middle, so we had three buildings, and then we went to split the south buildings again, so now we had four separate buildings as part of this most recent submittal. Total of 67 storage units as part of this request. Buildings are 4,620 square feet, 9,450 square feet, 9,660 square feet, and the largest is 11,340 square feet. This is a total of 35,070 square feet worth of storage space for this property. In the current state, there are two properties. The applicant has submitted a final plat, which would combine these two properties, and that would need to be recorded prior to issuance of a building permit, and there would only be one access point to this property off of 3rd Industrial. Square footage of vehicle use areas, 41,269 square feet, which would require 3,301 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is proposing for 5,450 square feet, so they are meeting and exceeding their requirement as far as that's concerned. The landscaping is showing street trees and shrubs along 3rd Industrial and Sam Ridley, and trees are also shown along the perimeter of the property as well. Architecture elevations, we have received revised plans since this dig well last week, so the southern buildings show brick on the rear, and then there's also brick along the western face, which is faces Sam Ridley. The eastern elevations on that southern building facing 3 would have a five-foot layer of brick with the rest of the material being metal. The northern buildings are to have the entire rear of the building north, the corrugated metal product. The western side facing Sam Ridley would be entirely brick. Eastern elevations with, the ones that face 3 would match the southern building, have a five-foot base layer of brick, and then the rest being metal. And then on the elevations for those buildings with the roll-up doors would be entirely metal. So we do have architectural elevations in here that do show what we're describing here, so put a little bit more into perspective. So those are, that's the design review section, standard comments, five of them all to remain. Couple staff comments to go through. Staff comment one, the plat, aforementioned plat would need to be recorded and before the permits are issued. Comment two is regarding the building elevations. We'd still need to see percentage of material shown on those elevations that were submitted, so we have new elevations that were submitted, just not percentage-wise, so we do need those percentages to confirm that it does meet design review requirements. It is with staff's recommendation that we would like to see the entire building be brick as far as what, the outside-facing walls, that would be visible from all street faces. So we're talking the southern portion of the buildings, the ends. So the only part of the building that would remain metal, as far as staff's concerned, would be the side that it does have the roll-up doors. Everything else we would like to see is brick compared to what is submitted tonight for you. Comment three was regarding the fire hydrant. Hydrant is required within 400 points of the structures. A fire line and hydrants must be installed to meet the distance requirements. The existing hydrant alone does not meet the requirements. We have received revised plan that showed an additional hydrant. Want to wait for utilities and fire department to confirm that before taking the comment off, so it does remain at this time. Comment four was regarding the entrance to the site with the gate. That has been addressed and can remove that comment. Comment five was about a building exceeding 12,000 square feet with the separation of the southern building. That now eliminates that comment and concern, so five can be taken off. Comment six regarding the landscaping, that has been addressed. Comment seven, once again, regarding landscaping, has been addressed as well, so that can be removed. And then we have an additional comment to add after looking through these, the, just talking the codes on this, they eliminated one of the units out of the southern building to split in half to make room for the fire hydrant, and these buildings, the stalls are 12 foot wide, so this is something that's more precautionary than anything else, we just want to make it known. The, there may be some additional building code requirements that take place as part of that due to maybe some firewall separation between those buildings, just so you don't have fire that spreads to additional units. So that's just a minor comment, something that we did want to make to be addressed, though. As part of that, staff recommendation, we would recommend approval with the above-listed comments, and that the building elevations that face the exterior property lines be clad in entirely brick. That is all I've got for you.
Somebody said, just like you're part of what you, just said you're recommending short of design review. Has the comments here say deferred? If the recommendation is deferred?
Yes, so that's been updated, the plan's been updated after we've seen revised plans that were submitted this past week.
So we're leaving comments one, two, and three?
One, two, three, and then the additional one regarding the code requirements if needed.
Code departments?
Yeah, code requirements for building materials as far as structure is concerned.
And we're convinced now that from, from anywhere as far as line of sight from the arterial there, that, that they're in compliance with design review or what we're requiring as far as the brick?
As far as what's presented before you?
Yeah.
That's where we want to see the design review. Percentages aren't shown on it.
So we need our percentages clarified.
To ensure that, they're going to be close, yes.
Okay. I know that was, we've seen this once before, and I know that was a big concern, because I don't feel that there was a comfort level at the commission level or the staff level at that time that, that we knew exactly where we're headed from a design review and what the elevations were going to look like. So it sounds like we've made a lot of progress to, to get to that point.
Yeah, we've worked back and forth with the applicant on this.
Yeah, and then we've got, I mean, this, what they have submitted to you is different to what staff's recommending, so I mean, that's something that they would probably like to talk to you guys about, because they, they, they would, they would like to put more metal on than what staff is recommending, so.
Okay.
If, if you all want to hear from them.
If they would like to talk to us about that, we'd certainly entertain it.
Hello, Eli Waldron, 415 West Norfolk Boulevard in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. As you know, there is a pretty large demand for this type of service here in Roseburg County. With the addition of, you know, the Lazy Days dealership in Murfreesboro and access to, of course, Percy Priest and several major interstates, this is a service that is in pretty high demand, and particularly within, you know, close proximity to housing. And that's kind of where it's coming from, is because a lot of these neighborhoods that all of the people in the town such as Smyrna are living in have HOAs that don't require, don't allow them to have, you know, trailers or oversized vehicles at their property. They would typically, after doing quite a bit of research, would prefer to actually just pay a little bit higher premium to have a, a service such as this closer to their home rather than out in the country. And I understand that obviously there is a, a design that needs to be kept up with to, you know, maintain the look from Sam Ridley and all of that. I guess the biggest question, in question is the, the northernmost wall. I know the code states that anything that is visible from the road such as Sam Ridley needs to be brick, and I personally have driven past the site, and I could even submit to you some additional pictures that were taken today after I talked with the staff. And there's enough vegetation that it does not appear like there will be any period where that will ever be seen from any point on Sam Ridley.
Eli, why would staff recommend otherwise, then?
Well, to be honest, I had actually worked with staff a couple times on this, and there was previously a notion, of my understanding, that it was not going to be an issue, and then just after this second round of comments, I was thrown a little bit of a curveball, to be honest with you, sir.
Okay. Is everything enclosed on this?
They are fully enclosed, yes, sir.
RVs, boats, anything is enclosed?
No, outside spots.
Nothing out in open parking lot?
No, sir.
What's a, what is the height of this building? Because if it's going to encase in RV, it's 12 or 14 feet.
It is 14 foot.
14 feet. So the doors will face each other internally?
That's correct.
You know, it's on the doors. I have to disagree a little bit with not being able to see it, because I drive by there four or five times a day, and the three buildings that are there close, the two before it and one after it, they're all brick. You can see just about every one of those structures from Sammerly Parkway. The only place you're not going to be able to see it is once you get up on, on part of that back section, because, you know, that greenery, once it dries down in the fall, you're going to be able to see it.
That's.
It's going to be visible.
That is the wall in question, though. I guess it's just that northernmost long wall on the backs of those two buildings, and it does sit down in a, you know, in a low spot as compared to Sam Ridley, so there's also quite a bit of elevation difference there as well.
Is it going to sit 14 feet low?
Well, you'll still see some of the buildings.
Because if it's 14 foot tall, it's going to stand out. It's going to be above everything. It's going to be as tall, if not taller, than some of the buildings that are currently out there.
The neighboring facility is a forklift facility that has a much higher ceiling that Sam Ridley still towers quite quicker than you realize. Could I submit a few pictures from the street?
Sure, if you want, we'll take a look at them.
From the shoulder of Sam Ridley?
Thank you.
This is coming from Lowe's Home Depot, coming from 24.
Yes, sir.
What about coming the other way? Because that's where it's going to be exposed at. That's where we're going to see that back building.
This is on the shoulder closest to the property.
Yeah, you're coming from the golf course that way, you're going to see it.
That whole wall is brick already, the one you're, well, the one you're referring to from the golf course.
Correct. But the one that sticks out past it, that's going to be exposed. You'll be able to see it. There's a line of sight there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, but staff did not have a problem with the interior walls being metal.
Well, as long as that back wall is, that's visibility-wise, that's what you're going to see.
I think where Mike said it in looking at this is, the trees here don't appear to be all evergreen-type trees, and that would lend to some issues with visibility in the fall and the winter as far as what we're seeing. Kevin, will you restate staff's position so that we are clear up here?
Yeah, we, we were okay, because the interior walls are almost all roll-up doors anyway.
Right.
And so we had no issues with that, and then there's, where the two pair of buildings are kind of the ends of those buildings on, where they kind of meet, we had no issue with, with, you know, metal there, because those aren't really going to be visible. Our, well, we, our recommendation was, was basically the, the walls that face an external property line, which would be 3, 3 road, Sammerly Parkway, and then the two sides is where we were looking at. That's where our recommendation was.
Thank you, Eli. Any more discussion or questions from the commission?
And just to clarify too, it doesn't have to be brick, it has to meet design review.
Okay.
So he's chosen to use brick, which is completely fine, but that's not, not metal.
Not metal.
Not metal, so.
Okay. And you're still waiting on the percentages to make sure?
Right. And really, what kind of what you all decide today is going to kind of determine what those percentages are, but I, if, based on our, what our recommendation is, I don't think the percentages are going to be an issue if you go with our recommendation. Of course, if you go against our recommendation, that's what we'll go with, and, you know, the percentages will clarify that, what those are, but, you know, whatever you all approve is what we would obviously administer is, is when it comes to get a building permit, so.
Colors on the building, are they going to be very similar to what's there? Black doors, dark colored brick?
They are similar, yes, sir. Could I ask one more question as well?
Sure.
Since we did break the northernmost building into two, you know, if, if that is y'all's opinion that that back face does need to be brick, could it just be the southernmost, or I guess, I guess I should say the westernmost building that is closest to Sam Ridley?
Eli, I'll just tell you where I kind of am coming from on this. I think it's visible from Sam Ridley in a lot of places that you may not be calculating for, especially during the winter months. I kind of feel led to follow staff's recommendations and make sure that the percentages are satisfying to them with what you bring, and otherwise, I think you got a good product. I think it's needed, but this is a major artery for us, and so we, we do want to get this right, you know? We do want to get it right. We don't want to look back on it later and say, man, I just wish we'd have put brick on that side, or, you know, it's kind of where we're coming from, I think, so. You know, it's kind of where we're coming from, I think, so. Other comments, discussion? Do I have a motion? Uh, to get it on the table, I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendation and comments. Okay. And percentages to be met according to staff's preference. Okay. I have a motion to approve with staff comments as outlined by Mark. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to new business. The first item is a rezoning request. Maggie Johnson and Gamil Camel, 806 Enon Springs Road West, Enon Springs Road West. And the rezoning is from C4 to C2.
Yeah, this is two separate tracts of land, um, have come in together, requested a rezoning from C4 to C2. They total just over an acre, uh, together. Uh, surrounding zoning is a mix of C4 and R2. The land use plan, again, this is close enough to Old Nashville Highway, falls in that same character area as the, the, the previous rezoning request we looked at, which again would kind of support a mix of what we have out there now, kind of that neighborhood scale retail and service as well as some, you know, mixture of maybe some attached residential as well. Enon Springs Road West is designated as a minor arterial and adequate right of way does, uh, is met there. Uh, there is an existing house on one of the parcels, parcel 24. The other one is vacant. Uh, so that's why one of them has an address and one of them does not. This time, I don't know if we have a specific use necessarily, but the uses that we're looking for is trying to widen the options by being zone C2 certainly. There is C2 zoning, uh, at the intersection of Old Nashville Highway and Enon Springs Road. But there's a couple of tracks there, um, that are still zone C4 in between there, so. Guess that's all I've got.
Kevin, when we looked at the comprehensive plan and we looked at zoning, we talked about going from, I'm trying to think of the word, from a C2 usage to a C4 and tapering into a neighborhood. And it looks like we're, we're C2, C4, C2 here.
Yeah, that's, that's what would happen if you were, if they did rezone the property. And you typically do see more of a step down, a consistent step down. You know, if you had the, those other two lots there are C4, if they were to come in, I think it would be a little easier because you'd have consistent C2 if you wanted to go C2 down Enon Springs Road West. Most of the zoning on C, on Enon Springs that is not residential, um, is more of a C4 nature until you get to Lowry Street. You'd have some C2 zoning at Lowry, near the Lowry intersection, uh, along Enon Springs. And then on the other side as well, both sides of the Lowry Street and then, uh, at Nissan Drive, obviously it's different there, but, and you have some C2 on the other side of Old Nashville Highway along Enon Springs, right at the intersection. So, I mean, I think at some point you would wanna step down from C2. You wouldn't wanna go C2 all the way down Enon Springs Road, certainly. But it is odd to have a C2 and a C4 and then back to C2 in that, in that area, so. And when I talked with the owner, I did recommend, in the original, it was one parcel and I talked about adding the other parcels and, and one of them was added, but not all four of them, so.
So two out of the four?
Right.
We, we actually had one, then we added a second?
Right.
Okay.
From the original discussion I had with, with the, the first person who wanted to talk about rezoning it.
Was there any discussion as far as the usage of this or what was planned?
There may have been. There may have been. It's been quite some times as I talked to them.
Okay.
With the number of people I talked to, I, I don't recall exactly. There may have been, but I don't remember at the time. Right now, I don't remember a specific use or anything like that.
Okay. Now I'll recognize you. Uh, I need your name and address, please.
Yes. Justin Levine, 3114 Madison Avenue, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Uh, this is Shane Ford, my partner. We're with Mammoth Landscape Solutions. We are looking at buying the property to the right of C4, one of the parcels, the second parcel is owned by, 806, by the gentleman behind me. We were interested in buying the property to more or less have it to store a lot of our equipment for our company. However, um, it, it won't be, you know, lawnmowers, trailers, in and out every day. It's more maybe long-term clearing the land, putting a structure up, you know, putting trees and things around it to store equipment, supplies and access that is needed, but not an open storefront, if you will.
So, let me make sure, cause I was interrupted. Is there going to be a building on this?
Not at the moment, no, sir.
So.
Long-term.
Okay, long-term. Eventually it'll be a building there, but for the immediate term, again, tell me what's gonna occupy this?
Nothing until we get into the phase of actually clearing it and putting, you know, a building on it. Essentially, it's just acquiring it.
Are you planning on parking any vehicles or equipment on it or anything like that?
Not immediately, no, sir.
Define immediately.
Uh, within the foreseeable future, I'd imagine. Within six months, you know, we would have more of a plan as to what we're gonna do with the property. More or less, we, uh, the property was for sale. We put in a bid for it. And at the moment, we're just trying to see, you know, contingency wise, if it were changed from a C4 to a C2, then we would be able to, you know, get in touch with some contractors as to what we wanna put. And legally, I guess, what we could put, where we had put it and, um, you know, house the equipment and supplies.
So, housing of equipment and supplies for, for sale or for use by your company?
Used by the company.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other question? Well, I have these gentlemen up.
And based on that, we're sure that the C4 zoning as it sits now is, will accommodate that?
The, the last, that type of business landscaping company like, that's, that's, has to be a C2 or, or C3 or C5. One of those kinds, not C4.
Okay. What is the C4 restriction, Kevin?
It's basically, it's basically, it's a, it's a neighborhood business. It's a, it could be a, uh, it could be, actually be a restaurant, but you couldn't have a drive-through window or anything like that. You couldn't have any type of, uh, uh, car sales or car repair, anything like that. You couldn't have, uh, hotels, things like that. It's more of just those, an office.
Professional office.
Certainly a professional office of some type, uh, a retail, small retail of some type. You know, like what's, uh, you have the, the property's on C4. It's on Old Nashville Highway where the gentleman has his karate studio and a couple of other spaces, those kind of things. Certainly gonna be allowed on C4. Anything with like, you know, any type of like a construction office, construction company which landscaping kind of falls under, under our zoning, you have to be in a C2 zone.
Any other questions for these two gentlemen? Or did you have something else to say?
No, I mean, uh, just to touch on what he said, essentially that's what we would just need office space. Uh, and if anything throughout, just say a hypothetical, you know, later on down the line, if there were a building and a structure and everything there, I'd say at most it'd be my partner and I, the ones accessing it, you know, so we'd access it in the morning and leave, you know, so it wouldn't be back and forth, constant trailers or trucks or dump trucks or equipment in and out of the place, but.
Okay, so, equipment storage and then an, an office for your company is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Potentially?
Yeah, potentially, yes, sir.
So if it were just an office, C4 would work?
Yes.
But it's gonna be more than an office because you're gonna have equipment?
If you ever want any equipment there.
Right now, we're kind of scattered with all of our things and it'd be nice to have everything housed in the location.
I think what, yeah, and I think what, you know, I'll speak for myself here, what I'm trying to weigh out is, you know, what's this gonna look like and how does this mesh with what we're doing here, uh, with Enon Springs, with a Rocky Fork, Enon Springs extension, in which, uh, you know, we plan to have a lot of, uh, vehicles on, on a highway that, uh, that will transition from housing to, you know, an interchange and whatnot. And this will lead right into the center of the city. So are we setting this lot up for something to be a storage area, you know, for equipment and landscaping materials that you drive by and, you know, maybe the corner develops out into, who knows, a daycare or, uh, a restaurant or something like that? How does that all fit in the grand scheme of what we're trying to do here? And, and, you know, again, I'm, I'm concerned that we're going from, uh, a heavier commercial zone, for lack of a better word, to neighborhood friendly, back to a, a heavier type use here.
Yes, sir, I understand your concerns. I know that there is a landscape, uh, in nursery just, uh, south of, on Old Nashville Highway South. There's one there. That, yeah, I guess if you were to take that, that's not what we're going for whatsoever. I guess aesthetically, if you were to look at it in our vision, you know, hypothetical, if we had the building, obviously we'd want mature trees. We'd want it to look established, well-nice, but not inviting into the sense where we have consumers coming to purchase mulch or, you know, plants. We don't do that. We don't wanna do that. We'd wanna aesthetically, you know, add to the value of the area as opposed to taking away from it.
Sure. I, I appreciate that. And I, I appreciate the way you've presented yourself and,
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, you, you've done a good job and I'm sure you, you two are, are very nice young gentlemen.
We try.
Well, it's obvious that you are. So, but we're, we're gonna make a decision on, on, um, what's best for the town, so.
No, I understand.
Any other questions? Okay, you guys can have a seat.
Thank you.
Now, would you like to still come up and say something?
No, sir, I'm just presenting myself just.
That's a no?
Just like now.
Okay, then you can sit back down. He tried. I was giving you an opportunity to hear if you wanted to come up, but you're good, right? Okay. Tim, if I may, uh, Yeah, please. These guys, I heard a lot of hypothetical and I know that you're not sure what you wanna do just yet. That's why it's hypothetical. A little bit of concern I've got, we've got C2 on the corner, C2 across from it. We stepped down to C4 and then potentially hypothetically stepping back up to a C2 zone next to an R2 zone all around it. Here's where my concern is a little bit and just being honest and transparent. You may sell that property a year from now. We have a C2 zone sitting there that opens us up to anything that'll go. We have to pay attention to that. You follow me? So that's kind of my concern if, if I'm being honest. Kevin, do you know how long it's been C4?
I don't know off the top of my head. I know it was zoned, I think all, maybe all four of those may even come in together.
January 2020.
Oh, okay. Very good, thank you.
C4?
Yeah.
And it was part R2 before that?
I think it was R2 before that, yeah.
And I think C4 is actually a pretty good fit for where it sits. If somebody so is inclined to open a C4 business there, I think you've got good zoning for that. I think that's proper zoning for the neighborhood around it. You've got R2 all around it, so. Kind of going back to what I, I mentioned a while ago, if you buy this place or have bought this place irregardless, whatever you've done, uh, and then decided a year from now, you've got a different plan to go elsewhere and you wanna sell this off, and now you have a C2 zone, we have no jurisdiction over really what could come in there at that point, right? It could be a gas station or a restaurant or whatever. And it's, it's gonna be all around that residential area right there. We gotta be careful of that, so.
And I respect that. And I mean, you know, ethically, we-
You can, and I'll allow you. One more here. Oh, now you're back.
But, I mean, ethically, we, we try to value ourselves on non-maleficence, you know, to do no harm.
I just want to know where we're coming from.
And I understand that completely. Across the street, directly across the street in that R2 box, uh, the top right, I guess, they have machinery, they're running a business out of that lot as well.
That's good to know.
And they have, well, I mean, they have more, bigger equipment than what we would actually store.
Somebody.
Hey, you know, but there's a right way and a wrong way and that's why we're here.
Yeah, I understand. And I do appreciate it. I think, I think Chairman recognizes being upright, forthright and all that. We're coming from a planning perspective and I think that's what we're trying to get our hands around.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
So you're still not gonna say anything, right? You were just back up. Okay. All right. Anything else from the commission or staff? Do I have a motion? I guess I'm gonna get another one on the table here. I would move to deny the request for C2 zoning based on the surrounding zoning. Okay. I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of denying this rezoning request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is denied. Our next item, uh, is from Gamil Camel. And this is for 102 and 104 Weekly Street, rezoning R2 to R4.
Yeah, this is a piece of property. It's, uh, has two houses existing on it. It's about 3,300 of an acre. And those houses were built, uh, both built, built before Smyrna had any type of zoning or subdivision regulations or anything like that. Uh, and so that's why you have two houses on the same track of land. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R2 and R4. Uh, land use plan would support a medium density, single-family here. Uh, no streets, you know, designated by Major Thoroughfare Plan are affected by this. Essentially, uh, the owner wishes to subdivide the property and have a house, each house would have its own lot. Uh, the R2 zoning, uh, does require a 12,000 square foot minimum lot size. The lot's only about 14,500 square feet. So it can't be divided as it's currently zoned. The R4 district would allow for a 6,000 square foot lot size for a single-family house. And so that's why he has requested this zoning, so that way he could divide this 14,500 square foot lot into two lots and, and have a house on each lot. And so that's really the reasoning behind the request. It would not be really any new development or any new houses to be built or anything like that. It's just taking those two existing houses and being able to sell them on each, on its own, uh, lot and to sell them that way, so. That's what we've got.
Questions for staff? Kevin, if we approve this and they go to the 6,000 square feet lot size, that would be probably 7,000 apiece, but it would still be within the R4 parameters?
Right.
Is there anything to prevent them from taking those homes down and putting more up, putting two new ones up?
They could put two new houses up, but it would still just be two houses. R4 does allow for duplexes, but you would have to have 10,000 square foot lot to do a duplex. So you're gonna end up with two 7,000 square foot lots, something like that, you could only build a house. I mean, so they could certainly tear down the house and build a new house, uh, which they could do today. But they could not.
Then it would have to go back through the process if that were to happen?
Well, I mean, their grandfather didn't, right now, to have two houses on one lot, so.
Right. But if they took those down, it would have, the new homes would have to meet all the new requirements?
Certainly would have to meet new building codes and all that, certainly, yes. Uh, there would be a, there could be a scenario where they, you could tear down, if, if you rezoned it to R4 and the subdivision doesn't happen, you could tear down the two houses and come, and build a duplex back, but you would still just have to, it's the same two number of units.
Right.
Would just be a duplex instead of two houses. Because you, you don't have enough land there to do more than that in either scenario.
The two houses that are currently on it are facing Weekly right now.
Correct.
Is that Frank Street? I don't know that it's wide enough to get a good vehicle in, is it?
Yeah, I think, I think, no matter what, you're probably going to have a continuation of them facing Weekly Street, yeah.
I think we had a discussion on a similar lot before about
I think it was one in front of it because of its habitat, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To the rear of this, yeah.
I think there is two houses on the one that's R4.
Yeah, and that was, that's, and that was done, of course, there's separate, the lots, there's a house facing Enon Springs and a house facing Frank Street.
Kevin, one more time, give me the options if this were rezoned, as far as what could be built going forward.
Well, you've got the two existing houses that can continue, certainly, that could be torn down and rebuilt. Still only two houses. The other opportunity is if the lot does not get subdivided, and it remains R4, just as one 14,500 square foot lot, they could tear down the two houses and build a, one duplex.
Or tear down two and build one, there'd be no reason to tear it down and build one home, but that's for
Sure, that could happen, yes. That could happen, I would not expect.
But it's two dwellings, whether it's connected or not.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's all?
Yeah, you're going, you're not going to increase the number of units on this with, by changing the zoning. You're just going to give them the ability to either divide it in half, or tear down and build a duplex back. That would be the change.
So the only advantage is, is, in rezoning, is to be able to break it into two lots if you were to sell independently, right?
Correct.
All right.
Other questions for staff? Or comments and discussion from here? Or any kind of comments or further discussion from the commission? There are no other surrounding duplexes in this area, it's all single-family.
There are some duplexes in that, in the downtown area. I don't think there's anything immediately surrounding there.
That's what I'm looking at, is this, just this immediate area. There's one on the corner of Weekly and, it's on the south end.
No, I mean, there definitely are some
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
In that general area, for sure, the downtown, there's, there's a mix of some duplexes in there. I don't think there's any touching this property, but.
Kevin, what's, what's staff recommendation on this?
I, I would recommend approval, I don't think, because again, we're not talking about increasing density, really, in that area. It might increase how it's built, potentially, but, I mean, this, I would rather have the houses be able to be sold separately. I think long-term, that's probably better, you know.
That, the R2 is probably the original zoning for that area, never has been touched or changed.
And again, of course, this is something that was, again, these were built prior to Smyrna having any type of zoning at all, so.
So they started as an R1 originally, right? Wasn't everything R1 originally?
If you go back early enough, there was RA and RB and RC and all this other stuff. If you look back at like the 1972 zoning ordinance, which was the original one, so.
I think, I think you were the mayor there.
I was three.
Now that we've covered the genealogy of the commission, is there any further discussion? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved.
Our next item is Nathan Melson, Enon Springs Road West and Big Sun Lane rezoning to a, it's actually a PUD amendment.
Yeah, this is, this is a request to amend the existing approved PUD for Cedar Creek. It's three separate tracts of land, that's totaling about 12.61 acres. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, C2, and the Sundale PRD. These parcels are also part of the Enon Springs Gateway Overlay District, and that would not change with this request. This is a part of our, the land use plan is part of our, of our 24 gateway area, which is a supportive mix of hospitality, retail, restaurant, multifamily uses. Major thoroughfare financials, Enon Springs Road West has a minor arterial and adequate roadway does exist there for that property, for that street. The request, the PUD amendment request, there's a couple of things here from a staff perspective. One, the PUD amendment request is to add the use of convenience, commercial, where fuel may be sold, as an allowed use on the lot at the corner of Enon Springs Road West and Big Sun Lane, which on the map, it's on the PowerPoint there, is the parcel highlighted in red. Staff would also recommend, because this was, there was, and this is all taking place, the land swap and everything that's taking place. The town was given some property by the school board, and we, with the developer, did a land swap, and the town actually owns the parcel that's on the map, is, is kind of the white parcel there at the corner of Percival and Big Sun Lane. However, the area that the, that was gifted to the town was not included with the PUD originally, and so we would recommend that that, it actually still shows up as an R1 zoning designation on our map. So we would recommend just moving the PUD boundary to include all the area up to Big Sun Lane there. So it just, it's all needs to be developed together. Obviously, it's was the plan all along. And so we want to incorporate that into the, into the Cedar Creek PUD. Would recommend that regardless of what you do with this amendment, recommend that be a part of the, be, be done. It benefits the town's parcel as well as the developer's parcel regardless of this amendment, to do that. So that's, again, we recommend that to you, and then, again, it's really just, there's nothing changing with the layout of the townhomes or anything like that, you know, there's, it's really just adding this use to that corner lot there. It's what's being requested. Most of the, the uses, the idea there was more of a C4-type uses for the most part, daycares and things like that. That's what was envisioned originally, and so that, and so this use was not included originally, and so that's why they are requesting it now, so. I think that's all I've got.
So regardless of what's decided, as far as that front lot is concerned, staff is recommending that we add this to the
Yeah.
PUD officially?
Yeah, correct. Well, there's, there's kind of a triangular,
Yeah.
It doesn't show up too well on this map, but a triangular area there. Again, it was something that was gifted to the town by the school board, with purposes of us then using it for town purposes, which the lot, and we made the swap with the developer, really helped both lots and helped both situations and make it more usable for both of us. And so all that's been done and taken place is just putting the zoning in place to match what's already been done with the land already, so.
So the corner lot in red is part of the PUD?
Yes.
What's in white was donated county south. I thought the whole parcel was donated.
No, no, it was just, well, there were several different things. Really, the parcel, the parcel that's in white was partially part of the original PUD as well. And really, the parcel that's in red was probably half of that was what was gifted to the town by the county, and then we swapped.
Okay.
Kind of the, the southern, like the corner for the large part of the, in the rear there along Percival is really what the swap was. Because we didn't need the road fundage necessarily, as far as the Enon Springs fundage, I mean.
Originally, those were flip-flopped, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was the larger parcel was in the back, yeah, because that's what the developer had originally.
We were going to receive for it, yeah.
Right.
Those two properties highlighted in white and red, they were almost in a high shape.
Yep.
These are properties, and they elongated through both of the sections of the town being seen. So what we did is, I worked with the developer to make the exchange, to make those usable lots. We would not really have been able to get what we probably intend to do with that property to later date in that high shape. So we made both pieces of property, and the developer, real good work, because we actually, from the town's perspective, had first choice in which lot we wanted for our use, as Kevin said, we probably did not need the road fundage for our use. So we made both pieces of property much more useful.
And again, all this is really just to move that boundary so that it's all clear to everyone going forward, no matter who owns the properties and those kind of things, it isn't included in the PUD. And then, in addition to that, the consideration of the additional use on that front track that's highlighted in red.
And that is for a convenience
Like a convenience store, gas station.
Slash gas station, correct?
Yes.
Was there originally some discussion about the potential of a daycare or something more C4 there?
I think that was the, one of the original ideas that the developer had.
Hard and fast, but.
There wasn't, yeah, there wasn't anything, there's nothing in the PUD restricting it to that. That was just a thought that it might be a potentially a good use for the property because of the schools and the residential in that area and that sort of thing. But it was never, there's nothing restricting that in the PUD, that that's the only use that could go there, anything like that.
Okay. I'll recognize you. Name and address, please.
David Alcorn, I'm the owner developer. I live in 113 Lexington Court in Murfreesboro. So just exactly what Kevin was saying, a couple of years ago when we formed this PUD, our idea was a daycare. With, we've marketed it for a couple of years in its current way, and we, we keep having the desire for a service station, still within the overlay, still with all the, but just changing that to be added to this PUD, to be allowed on that front street, and our thoughts was just the, the, the growth and everything that's now happened on the adjoining property that, that allows for a little bit more commercial use than what we had originally envisioned a few years ago.
Questions for Mr. Alcorn? Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's really being asked or requested for a specific use, not necessarily a widely-used commercial zone?
Right, it's a very, it's just adding that specific use, it would still be allowed, any of the C4-type uses and those kind of things would still be allowed, daycare center, it's just adding that specific use in addition to. Yeah, it's not asking to be everything allowed in C2, it's just that one specific use in addition to a C4-type uses and the daycare centers and those kind of things.
This falls within the overlay, correct?
It does fall within the Enon Springs overlay, and that, that would not change.
All right, let's talk a little bit about the overlay as far as what we are requiring.
It's a little bit, it's an increased design review, basically, as far as, like for a gas station, they couldn't have a flat roof, they're going to have to have a peak, you know, shingle-type roof and those kind of things. That's specific, there's some restrictions on signage, a little bit more, things like that. Larger-scale commercial, probably larger than this, would have some other things with the rest of the landscape, and some additional landscaping requirements, things like that.
And elevations?
Building elevations are really similar to some of the stuff, we've kind of upped design review, so it's not as, as big of a change now in that, as far as materials at least. But certainly, that would be as part of it as well. Again, regardless of what is developed here, they would have to meet those requirements with or without this PUD amendment.
Okay.
My concern with adding this is traffic getting in and out. I know with school, school being right there, it will create some hardships on traffic getting in and out, people stopping if it is going to be a gas station, getting in and out of that, the same thing, we kind of looked at one ample road with traffic on the corner out there. People coming in, coming out, you've got access in, you've got a lane to turn into the school. It, it would make it very tough during school times, especially to get in and or out of a gas station there, because that's what it's, what it's proposed to be. That's my biggest concern, is traffic, full of traffic.
When would be the appropriate time, then, to address any issues with traffic, any concerns that way?
We typically, most, most gas stations kind of depend on how large they are. Most of the time, they do tend to hit the threshold that we have for trips generated. So it's usually typically would be something we look at at the site plan stage.
Are you saying traffic study, or just?
The, the traffic study itself, yes. We would require it most likely at that stage. You know, that could be something, if you wanted to, you could add it as a condition of the amendments at any gas station. You're going to require traffic study, no matter what the trip generation threshold is. Because some, some of the smaller gas stations, which we've had a few that were, only had four pumps or something, they really don't hit the threshold as far as the number of trips.
Well, we're talking a C-store
Yeah.
with, with gas, is what we're talking, we're not just talking gas station.
Right, and most likely, it's going to hit the threshold, but you could add a, as a condition of the PUD amendment, if you wanted to do so, that it's going to require traffic study regardless of that. Just in case that were to happen. Because I think you're, Mike brings up a good point. I mean, you do have a lot of traffic during the school drop-off and pick-up time, certainly, right there, so. Because that's the only access to the school right now. Eventually, you'll have another way in and out through Spring Hill and through Percival eventually and different things, but right now, that's it, so.
Considering the proximity to residential, what would be required from a buffering and/or, or as far as lighting and things along those lines?
Well, you would be required certainly along the Northern Brownie line with the, the townhomes there. The back, you just have your typical landscaping along the road frontages. The back lot is, has a commercial-type designation too, so it would be pretty limited on the back lot to, to town's lot. Certainly from a lighting perspective, they would have to meet, again, it's part of the gateway, so there's some limitations there as far as the height of the poles and those kind of things.
So it's already built in?
Right.
Signage as well?
Yes. And that's all, again, that's regardless of what it's used for, but it would certainly apply to the gas station if it's, what ends up happening there.
Other questions, discussion?
Kevin, is there anything near there, at least currently, that would be like a neighborhood service station or C2? I can't think of anything.
There's not there, no, there's not. You'd have to come back to Old Nashville Highway and go north or south on Old Nashville Highway, really, at this, currently.
And as this area grows, do you see this as a fit or not?
Well, certainly, there, I could see long-term, if you have an interstate exit at 24, and I think you're definitely going to see, would see, this type of use in that, in that area. You know, if this was a little bit further away from the interchange, it could happen. But certainly, I think if you have a five-lane road or four-lane with a median, it would just what you would have at that point. You know, I could, you know, I think you could see more traffic enough to where you might see some of this type of use, certainly. It would be a little odd today, you know, I think, as far as, just from the standpoint of of, there's nothing else out there right now anything remotely like that. But I think long-term, if you have an interchange there and you have a four-lane road in front of it, you know, certainly you would go Milton, Medical Center Parkway, you certainly have gas stations along it, so.
I think we all know that interchange is several years away.
Mm-hmm.
I hope Tony and I get to see it.
Me too.
Across the interstate, was that zone C4 or C2?
It was C2 at the interchange.
Okay. Just across the interstate?
Yes.
So there would be an opportunity there to do a fuel station or gas station convenience store without being in direct, having direct impact on school traffic and getting in and out in the mornings. And, I mean, you've got buses turning there coming in, you've got people wanting to get out of that store. It's going to, it's going to create some hardship.
Are we good? I'll entertain a motion.
For approval with staff comments?
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, including the requirement of a traffic study?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Thank you. Just, just clarifying. I thought that's what you said. So I have a motion to approve with staff comments, including the requirement of a traffic study. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve staff comments, including the traffic study. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Our next item is Rob Mulchan, 349 Cheney Road, rezoning R4 to PRD.
This is a rezoning request. It's for a part of a parcel of land on 349 Cheney Road. It's about 7.37 acres of the property. It's, currently has a, there is a church located on the property and they will maintain about 2.6 acres of the property as, in their ownership and still have the church there, but they would look to sell or looking to sell to the developer, the 7.37 acres. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R4, R6, and C2 in Smyrna and C1 government use. And Laverne is actually the Laverne High School football stadium and that sort of thing is what it's actually adjacent to in Laverne. Landage plan is, this does fall within the Sam Ridley corridor character area, which would support a mix of the retail and service uses as well as high-density residential and appropriate locations. Major thoroughfare plan does show Cheney Road as a collector, so adequate roadway may exist, but we would have to evaluate that further if, if one of the site plans is submitted. Now, the request at PRD is for 67 townhomes on the 7.37 acre. That's a little over nine per acre. Again, the remaining 2.64 acres would remain zoned R4 and continue use as the church. We did ask them to resubmit the auto turn regarding, they, they had an auto turn and it appears to work, but we want to be sure, they needed to confirm what apparatus they used in that auto turn. We did have a few other comments as well, so we want to keep number five, basically. Number six, they had, just showed a single-width driveway originally. They have widened that to be able to park two vehicles side by side in front of, for all the units, so that can be removed. We did ask them to extend the private sidewalk along the entrance driveway to the public sidewalk, which is along Cheney Road, and they have done that, so that can be removed. A type-C buffer strip is required along the existing and proposed property boundaries budding R4 and the town limits. They did show that in some of those locations, but not all of them, so we would want to keep that comment. There is an existing 8-inch gravity line, sewer line that crosses this property. That'll have to be rerouted due to this layout, and so they do show that dash line kind of as a proposed lot layout, so we can remove that. And number 10 is really just an FYI, the, if this is approved and development does happen, we would have to look at the church. They are removing some of their parking with this, and so we would have to, they do have room to add some, but they'll have to, some of the revised parking plan for their property, to be sure they're still meeting our requirements as far as parking is concerned. So that's something really just kind of an FYI for them, you know, again, if this moves forward, so. So really, we had the buffer comment and then just asked them to resubmit that auto turn. We did have a booklet of information which had the discussion regarding the, the units and everything. There, it is a mix of brick and stone and hardy-type exteriors. They're meeting our requirements with regards to the open space requirements and the guest parking and those kind of things as well. And they are, have a 1,600 square foot minimum on the house size was what they proposed. So I think that's all that I've got.
And you did note a two-car parking pad?
Yes.
In the comments?
Yes.
What's, what are we looking at from a density perspective?
It's a little over nine. It's like 9.1, I think, something like that.
How does that compare with what we've looked at recently from a...
It's pretty consistent. It's very, it's really close to what you looked at earlier tonight on that. It's almost exactly the same. This is actually a little bit less than that one thing, just by here.
Kevin, what's that R6 to the east side over there?
That is the, that's the Wolverine Trail condominium condos, townhomes. South is Poplar Grove. And then on the other side of Cheney Road, just to the south, there's, I forget the name of it, there's some apartments there, but I can't remember what they're called, but...
I know what you're talking about there.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Stone, stone something, yeah.
Stone something, yeah, yeah. They've been there, I don't know, 15 years or so.
You gave us more information on, about the church parking?
Yeah, they're just going, there's a, they kind of have a double row of parking that kind of goes north to south on the property. They're removing, I can't remember exactly how many spaces. It's, I don't know, 10 or 12, something like that. Kind of the southern end of their parking lot. They've got room surely on their site to add more parking out. It's not going to be an issue, I don't think, for them to add some more parking to meet our requirements. Honestly, we would have to look at it. It's been so long since that was built. We'd have to go back and see if we even have the plans, but they may have had more than we've required anyway and still be okay. We just need to look at that.
Matt Taylor, excuse me, Matt Taylor from SEC, representing the applicant. I've got Mr. John Blanketship with me as well, representing them as well. We've already talked to the church in our negotiations that we would sit down with them, you know, if this was successful and, you know, one, make sure they meet the town's requirements, but also make sure they've got enough parking for their needs. You know, I don't, I'm not sure how many people attend here on a regular Sunday, but we would, we would build that with, you know, at the same time, we're doing our work next door. I think we're going to wind up relocating their playground as well, if I remember correctly.
So does the church own this property?
Yes, they could, they own all of it currently.
They own all of it?
Yeah, they own the entire, roughly 10 acres.
Other questions for Matt while we have him up here?
Matt, do you know what the mix is on, it says two and, probably two and three bedroom, I'm guessing?
It is. I don't, I do not know the mix on that. You know, normally, we see about a 60-40 split on that between, I think it's about 63s and 42s.
Okay.
But that's not a hard and fast number. It is just kind of a rule of thumb.
Yeah. With 1,600 square feet minimums, I wouldn't think there'd be any singles, so you've got two and three bedrooms, so.
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, we do not anticipate having any one bedrooms here.
Anything else? Matt, do these sort of mirror the, the ones to the south?
It has been a while since I've been inside of Poplar Grove from an architectural standpoint. My, my gut tells me that the ones to the south are not nearly as attractive. The, on page 10, we show those. That looks like a pretty, there's a lot of detail inside of that, a lot of front facade changes, little details like changing brick courses and lighting over the garages or, or maybe a little shed roof over the garage. A lot of little details that really make that pop, and I did not see that. I think that Poplar Grove is...
It's older.
Yeah, and I just didn't used to see that sort of detail of the townhomes back then, so.
But there's, there's quite a few double garages in there, is what I was asking.
Could be, and here, as Kevin said, we did wind up doing all, almost all of our units have enough driveway to have two cars back to back, and then all of them have enough depth for two cars side by side.
And did you answer the question about the ratio between two-car and single-car? You may have, I was...
All the garages, they're all one-car garages. I was thinking, I'm sorry, I thought Mr. Allen...
All of them are?
Yes, sir. All of them are one-car garages. I thought Mr. Allen was asking about bedrooms. Yeah, I was asking about bedroom.
Okay, because it says in here, a minimum one car for an entry garage, led me to think there might be some two-car in there.
We can change that to all one-car. We just, whenever I think about zoning, I think about men's and maxes, so it's some language that I carry over.
The, page six in their booklet has some pictures, and one of those pictures is number eight on page six.
That looks like Poplar Grove, is it not?
That's one of the Poplar Grove.
Yeah.
So that gives you an idea, which has some...
But those are two-car.
There's a two-car, yeah, those are two-car garages.
Yeah.
But that, like, just to give you an idea of kind of what the materials are and those kind of things, what they look like, but...
What's the possibility of getting a mix?
We would have to go back and I think rethink our whole floor plan here, just because the way these are set up, if you look at the elevations, we went with the one-car because we honestly think they look better because you get more of a, you're able to ride more of a front door. You know, one thing you'll notice in that picture to the south are those two-car, all you see is the garage door. There's not really a good front door. You lose a lot of that detail and we fight that on...
Put them on the ends?
On any of them, I think. One thing with the one-car is it let, it just lets you do a nice elevation. You know, on that, if you go back to that page six, you just don't see a lot of detail. It's a very flat facade, but those one-cars allow you to do a little, quite a bit more detail in there.
I don't disagree with you about the looks of these two-car, but I like your elevations, right? They have a lot more decor and architectural appeal to them.
Yes, sir.
My personal goal is to try not to make it look like apartment complex and having a mix in there to where it looks residential as well.
Yeah, and, and we don't want it to look like an apartment complex either, you know, not to bash on Poplar Grove.
These are for-sale properties, I would say.
They are. Everything here, we'll be set, we'll set these up through an HBR, absolutely. I don't know what Poplar Grove is. I assume it was a for-sale.
It was.
So...
It was, yeah. I think gas runs, though, gas.
I think so.
Yeah. Made your way.
And I think that we're going, with the variety, we've committed to some architectural treatments that will create a variety between the units and the buildings inside of our PRD to help eliminate that monotony and that apartment-style look that I think you're concerned about.
Matt, what's the standard size of garage doors? Is it nine or 10 wide?
I think a single car is typically a, an eight or a nine-foot wide door. I don't think they get to 10. I think your internal dimensions wind up being 10 or 11-foot wide on your garage itself, so the garage can be a little narrower than that.
Then the double, a double is 16?
Yeah, sure. And so that's going to take up, I mean, you can kind of tell, that's going to take up the whole front facade at that point, which is exactly what you see at Poplar Grove in that picture.
But what you get with that is some three-bedroom units, right? Because now you've got area above it that's wider.
We can, so I know with some of these, you can have some three bedrooms, depending on how that internal unit lays out. You know, you, I'm sure you give up a little bit more, or you add a little bit more upstairs.
Could you, could you do the, all the outsides threes or the two-car? All the ones on the outsides of the buildings?
That is not something that we've really talked about with the client.
And likely what that would do, Mike, is it sort of drops your density down too, because, not that nines...
It's about 20, it's about 20 two-car.
Yeah.
According to what's on...
Because you still have to build it all on that same pad, right, so.
Or I guess you could increase your pad size, but... Most people don't use their garage for cars anyway, it's storage.
That's why we did the two-car.
Yeah.
Why?
Right.
It's why we did that. Right, that's right.
So what is, what's generally accepted with a three-bedroom home, garage-wise, that is? So you wouldn't expect a three, a three-bedroom house, unless you were living downtown and didn't, you know, have a car, but being where we are, 30 miles outside of Nashville, you know, go fishing and stuff, got a three-bedroom home, do you expect to buy a home with a one-car garage? That would be the question. That's the homeowner, not the builder. I understand the builder's point of view.
Yes, sir. So I think that, I think that garages, a lot of times have become storage places. I think that if you're buying in a, buying a townhouse, you probably have a little different mindset than probably me yourself. I have seen a lot of one-car garages that are one, that are three-bedroom, and so we've got a lot of projects that we've done that have been exactly this, that 60-40 mix. It is, it is a, either a no, no garage or a, or a one-car garage, they'll have that mix. So they, we used to never do two-car garages on townhomes until, you know, probably the last 10 years. I think around 2010, I started seeing my first one that I can remember. And so a lot of those before that were one-car garages and they, we had a mix of threes and twos in there.
I think what we're starting to see is the, you know, the real estate market has shifted quite a bit to affordability, and now these are becoming entry-level, first-time homes where there's single-family dwelling has kind of left some of our purchasers unable to, to value and make that purchase anymore. So to Andrew's point, and I, and I, to your point too, Matt, you, you said they become storage areas, and they somewhat kind of do, but when you're in a townhome product like this, there's really nowhere else to put anything except on your back patio or maybe in a small little attic, so having space in that garage is invaluable, and they may not use it, but at least it's an adequate place to put stuff, you know? And so that's, I guess that's why I'm asking about the two-car and the mix, if it's possible.
It's just some, I'd have to go back to my client and ask. We just have not talked about it. We, you know, we saw, you know, felt like the one-car fit well here. You know, and some of that does go back to, you know, you just mentioned affordability. You know, it is something, I mean, you know that we fight that all the time, and so, you know, trying to balance the affordability with a, something that looks really, really good, I think, so just something I would have to talk to my client about. It's not a conversation we've had. So just something I would have to talk to my client about, it's not a conversation we've had.
Other questions for Matt? Anything for staff? Do I have a motion?
I've put a few out there for discussion this evening, but I don't think I want to do that on this one. But what I would do, if there's not a motion, I'm assuming, if there's not, I don't want to get ahead of myself. But if there's not, would this be something that Matt and the client would want to discuss as a deferment or not? And Matt, I may be overstepping myself here, but it's awfully quiet up here sometimes.
I understand. We, I actually were just texting my client, they just couldn't be here this month. And so I think they would much rather give a month to evaluate your request and see what kind of footprints we can come up with and come back next month. So I, you know, I think they're patient guys and have good relationship with the church, so I think they can work that there.
Thanks. I don't know if that's a request or not.
I think certainly you all can make that motion, somebody wanted a motion to defer till 30 days.
Based on the conversation Matt just had, I think I would make the, hang on, here he comes.
They said they'd be more than happy to do the two car garages on the end units. So I'll have to get you some elevations, but they said they would certainly do that.
Well, without elevations, are we comfortable with that as staff?
I mean, I think as long as they're consistent with what they've already submitted, and as far as style and materials, I would be okay with that. You know, getting that to us next week or whenever they can.
Matt, do you know if that changes the number of units or not?
I'm sure I'll be pushed to not change that. There might be a decrease of a few. We've got some here that have quite a bit of open space between them, and so I'll have to get that exact footprint from them. But it may, it may decrease the number, certainly not going to increase it, but I'll...
And I appreciate your willingness to do that, do you?
Yes, sir.
You know, the neighboring property to the south has quite a few of them, as we've already recognized.
Yes, sir.
Consistency with them being right there, I kind of, you know, it just kind of feels better to me.
Alright.
Thank you.
I think that's a big enough change.
Yeah, I do too.
For deferments.
Okay, you making a...
I'll make a motion that we defer one month.
Okay, I've got a motion to defer for one month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to defer. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This matter's been deferred. Next, we have Caleb Spearing, 103 Maple Street. Resoning C2 with LSO to R2 with LSO.
Yeah, this is about a six tenths of an acre property, currently zoned C2. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and R2. This land use plan would support this, it's kind of our depot district, you know, our downtown area of a mix of retail and restaurant and office and residential. No major streets are affected by this request. There is an existing house on this property that has been used as a commercial business, which caused the grandfathered residential use to cease. And so the new owner wants to reestablish that residential use in the house. And so basically, that's the reason for the request, to go from the C2 request to the R2 request. So that's all I've got.
Tanner?
Yes.
I will not be participating in discussion or voting on this.
I was getting ready to turn to Catherine and...
You guys got mad lit.
Thank you, Michael, we recognize that.
Yep, we got you.
Questions for staff then? Staff, are you comfortable with this?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving with staff comments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved with one abstention from Mike. Okay, now we're on to preliminary plats. The first item is Talia Trace, section 1, 12495 Old Nashville Highway, owner developer, Old South Properties.
Yeah, this is the preliminary plat, this is the first phase of the Talia Trace development. This is part of the Talia Trace PRD. This is about 10.66 acres. They're looking at basically two lots here with the right of way dedicated for the public streets and the easements and that sort of thing. There's a site plan later on in your agenda for the units that would be located on those two lots. So that'll be looked at later. With regards to the plat themselves, we had several standard comments. And so I will point out, within that, they are proposing dedication along Rocky Fork Road, some right of way there as per its requirements as a collector. And there is some sewer main, there's a comment regarding a sewer main alignment. That's something that the town and the developer are working through, for a project that the town is potentially working on there. So that's, that's reason for that comment. So anyway, we would recommend approval of the plat with those eight remaining comments. They're all really standard type comments, so that's all I got.
I prefer a recommendation for approval with the staff comments. Do we have any other further questions, or do we need to discuss anything?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now on to final plats. Our first item is Gwen subdivision lots 1 and 2, 4147 Rock Springs Road. Owner developer, Jeanette Gwen and Robert W. Gwen III.
Yeah, this is just, it's two lots along Rock Springs Road there. Just one parcel that's looking divided into two, zoned R1. Typically two lot subdivisions, but something we could review as staff, but there is some public improvements here with some sewer lines, so it does have to come before you all. The major thoroughfare plan does show Rock Springs Road as a collector, an adequate right of way is shown to be dedicated there. We had some comments regarding owner's signatures and asked them to submit some sewer construction plans because they are going to have to be extending sewer. Number four is really just for their information, because there are several detached accessory buildings on the property. And so since they're reducing their lot size, that does reduce the maximum allowed square footage. So that's just for their information, so they're made them aware of it. Number five, it would need to remain, it's again just an informational thing though, but we want to keep it that they will be required to bore the road, not open cut it when they tunnel the sewer main. We did ask them to show the size of the existing water and sewer mains, they showed the water but not the sewer, so we need to keep that portion of that comment. Number seven, would still need to be remain, they don't show that sewer main, just basically the entire length there. And so that would probably come with the construction plans, but it does need to be shown on this plat as well, so we want to keep that comment. And then comment number eight, we would need to keep that first sentence of that comment regarding the proposed driveway location and length of the driveway culvert. Because this is not in, this is a ditch section, it's not a curb and gutter. We can remove that last portion of comment number eight regarding the label they had, had a misspelling there. So they've taken care of that part of it. So really, we would recommend approval with the comments, except six and eight tweaked a little bit there, that they did address a few things, so. And that's all I've got.
Staff is recommending approval with this?
Yes.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Our next item is Morton Lane, 3178 Morton Lane. Owner developer, James P. and Juanita Still.
Yeah, this is, again, it's two lots on Morton Lane, it's about 4.96 acres, R1 zone. The, this one's before you because it is utilizing septic systems, there's no sewer there. And so it is, it does require to come before the planning commission as well as council. So, as, so, but the first comment regarding Morton Lane is a minor street and adequate right of way is shown being dedicated there. Same comment as the previous one regarding the detached accessory buildings and just for their, their information regarding the square, allowed square footage there. Comments, three is a standard comment, would need to remain. And number four regarding the water service, again, we want them to bore under Morton Lane, not open cut that. And then comments, the rest of comments five through nine are really from Consolidated Utility District, and would need to remain, that they'll need to work with them because this is their water service area. They can meet the fire flow requirements, so that is not an issue there. And then comment number 10 is really just an informational comment again, because, because this is utilized, developed utilizing septic systems, it is required to be approved by council as well as planning commission. So then you all certainly can approve, but it would also have to go to the council next week as well. So we would recommend approval with those comments.
And as I recall, we've had a couple lots over the years that were septic and that didn't appear to be an issue, correct?
Yeah, there's no sewer available here, this is not an issue, they've got adequate soils. They'll still have to get approval from TDAC to do that, but that's, it's certainly something that comes up periodically.
Yeah, okay. Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now on to item three under final plats, the vintage block one, Old Nashville Highway at Jenny Lane. Owner developer, Bester Waldron Bron Family Limited Partnership.
Yeah, this is just kind of the first lot of the vintage there, the preliminary plat came through some time ago. And so this will be the final plat again, establishing those, the two new public streets as far as the right of ways as well as easements. It's only one lot, about 13 acres. Again, as far as the major thoroughfare plan, Old Nashville Highway is a minor material and White Birch and Avenue in Needham are collectors. And they are showing those, that, the right of way there for all those streets. They had some utility easements labeled, not labeled public, that needed to be public, so we asked them to correct that. So number two has been done, can be removed from the list. Comments three and four are standard comments and would need to remain. Comment five, they do still show C2 as a zoning, and it is PRD here, so it does need to be fixed. That the parcel, this parcel has been sold, and so they need a new parcel number and the correct owner shown. We did ask them to show the line size and location of all the existing and proposed water, sewer and storm drains facilities. And then to show the fire hydrant locations, all those comments still need to be addressed. Those are kind of cleanup things, we're fine recommending approval with those comments. One other thing I did in looking at this again this afternoon before the meeting, there are some of the utility and drainage easements don't have the dimensions shown. So we need to clarify that, just so we have that clarified. So we want to add a comment just to provide dimensions for all the public utility and drainage easements. So with that added comment, removing number two, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mike. I have a motion to approve with staff comments, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We're now on to site plans, our first one is Ken Pilfordon Drive, 611 Ken Pilfordon Drive. Owner developer, Tom DeCouch.
This is a project y'all have seen a couple times in the past, brought it back this month for review again. The, this is a 4,200 square foot retail building. There's, current lot is vacant, it's behind the, I believe Smyrna Plaza, Smyrna Village Shopping Center. Current state's vacant, and there would be one access point proposed off of Ken Pilfordon Drive to access it. Vehicle use area for the site, 7,840 square feet, which would require 784 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is shown for 1,136 square feet. Total park required of 21 spaces, and they are showing for 20, actually, there's a little mishap on that. The, there's a line that's not drawn on the plan that should be, there's space for it, it's just not drawn in. It was shown on previous plans, but it has been taken off, so we got to comment later in the plans to revise that. Not any issues, that's something easily can be taken care of with drawing. There is also one handicap space that is required, and they're showing for it as well. Landscape plan shows trees lining the eastern property line along the multifamily development. Street trees are also shown along Ken Pilfordon Drive with shrubs planted around the parking lot. Architecture elevation submitted for the front and side elevations show brick with fiber cement accents around the roof line. The rear of the building shows ground face masonry, which is considered a secondary material, and as proposed, it does meet designer view. Standard comments one through five to remain, comment, standard comment number six, we just want to make it known that adequate parking for this is not shown for any future restaurants. Just want to make the applicant aware of that, that this, as proposed, would not be suitable for a restaurant based on parking configuration. Staff comments, staff comment one goes along with the standard comment just listed, any future restaurant would require a 1,500 gallon grease trap. So not really any of concern, but for future reference if they desire to put one in. Staff comment two is regarding a grammatical error, if they have corrected that, can be removed. Comment three, we asked the distance between the side of the building and the rear of those townhomes right there. They have addressed that, it is about 56 foot for that total distance. As part of that comment with the parking spaces earlier mentioned, just want to add another comment on there to add the striping to designate 21 spaces out on the site. Something easy that can be fixed, but just wanted to make that an additional comment. So with that, staff comments one, one and the additional four will remain. That's it.
Mitchell, what's changed from what we've seen previously?
Yeah, so previous plans showed the delivery point being on to the east side of the building, and that has been addressed. They've shifted that to where the truck and dumpster, or the garbage truck and the semi truck is currently shown at this time on the over plan right there. They worked out in agreement with the neighboring property owner to use that space for offload and unload of the trucks. So that has addressed the concern for delivery vehicles at the site. And that was our primary concern with the last model.
And are we okay for emergency vehicle access?
Yeah, at this time, it's been reviewed, there's adequate space between the side of the building and the rear of that Smyrna Plaza and the rear of the site where the offload unload site would be out, there's adequate space to maneuver. So we're all good with that.
I think the other question with, or concern we had before was the dumpster. The dumpster was located on the back corner of the property against the townhomes, and it looks like they moved it up front, so. And that will be, of course, fenced in or bricked in, right?
Yes.
Match, okay.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, staff comments.
I have a motion to approve... Have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion's approved. Our next item under site plans, Parkway Baptist Church Edition, 1715 Lee Victory Parkway. Owner, developer, Church Baptist Parkway of.
Yeah, this is a addition that would be on to the back of the Parkway Baptist Church, which, uh, is existing today. The addition they're proposing for is 7,831 square feet in size. This would be adding on to the, I guess, the southeastern portion of the building. No additional pavement is supposed to be added as part of this development, and then the access points and everything else would pretty much remain the same. We're just talking about an addition being added to the rear of the building. Uh, square footage of vehicle use area, 59,145 square feet. Square footage of requirement for landscaping is 5,915 square feet, and 10,528 square feet will be proposed. A lot of that is already existing. They are proposing to add a little bit extra around the entrance to this addition as well. So, uh, most of that is remaining, but they are meeting our requirements. Total park required of 133 spaces, and they are showing for 133. Handicap parking requirement of five, and they're currently showing seven. Landscape plan shows existing vegetation to remain with shrubs and trees added near the pedestrian entrance to the proposed addition. Architecture elevations show the proposed elevations to match the existing building elevations in terms of the materials used and color. The base of the building would have a stone finish with the rest of the building finished with ephes. As presented, the elevations would not meet our current designer view requirements. However, the elevations that are proposed would match and mirror the existing building, so it would create more of a seamless appearance for the addition. Couple standard comments, all to remain, one through five, and then staff comments. Staff comment one is regarding the existing fire sprinkler system will be required to be extended into the addition. Comment two, to submit sewer and water utility plans, including the fire protection plans, to be reviewed by our utility department. Uh, comment three, if a, more of an informational comment, if a kitchen is to be added, a 1,500 gallon grease trap will be required. Comment four can be, uh, amended a little bit here. They did show the first part of it where we asked them to show dimensions of the building and the addition. We'll leave that last part where it says all points of the building must be able to be reached within 150 feet of a hand fire line. Comment five can be removed regarding the landscaping. Comment six, uh, got a little bit going on with this and then addition to it as well. Our original comment was that the, we wanted them to show the entirety of the parking area, including all striping. There's some striping shown on the plans that are not correct as far as what's shown on the actual site. So, we want just all those striping to be shown on the plan, to be consistent with what's actual out at the site. There's additional parking area to the rear of the building as shown on the aerial shot. That's something that wasn't shown on the existing plans. That's now shown on the updated plans we have received earlier this week. There are several more handicap parking spaces that may not meet ADA requirements. As far as the additional area in the back, it's got some handicap symbols shown on it. According to ADA requirements, it would not meet ADA striping, so they're not technically an ADA space. There are several in that back lot and then up in the front lot as well. It's nothing that, um, needs to be concerned as far as the overall ratio is concerned. They're still meeting it for the ratio. But that's just additional spaces that they have out there that don't technically meet ADA requirements. Something that's more so informational for them, nothing that we can really make them remove. It's, if it's something where it happened ADA compliant, it'd be on their site, issue between ADA and them for the overall site. So, as far as requirements are concerned, they're meeting ADA requirements. Space, dimension, width, not as much, but... There's also, in that back lot, there's also a gravel area. You can't park on gravel per the ordinance, so we asked them to bring that up to town standards as far as pavement is concerned. They would be able to use it at that point, uh, either A, pave it, or B, remove it, one of the two options. The revised plans we received show a fire lane apparatus turnaround behind those parking spaces then to be paved. As part of that, it's, fire department's okay with it. They would just like it to be designated as a fire lane hatched out so people aren't prone to be parking in that area as well. That's an additional comment that we'd like to add as well, regarding that fire turnaround. So, uh, loaded comment, a lot of it's more so informational than it is, uh, direction for the applicant to revise and address. But, uh, with all of that, comment, first part of comment four can be removed. Comment five can remove entirely, and then comment six, along with the amended part of it regarding that fire turnaround. With that, staff would recommend approval.
Not so much a question as a comment. I know back when the church was originally built, it met design review, correct? And so, they're trying to keep contiguous with what they've got. I think if you change that now, you could actually mess it up and make it look a little odd or a little weird sitting there. So, I understand the design review portion, but since then, our design review requirements have changed, and, uh, we've had other churches in here before with, uh, some similar requests, but they were going to build it, and it had to be designed to be. That said, I think it makes more sense to keep this continuous, uh, for the appeal and the design of the property than trying to change it at this point.
I'm, I'm in agreement with that, and I think that we've seen that in other examples. Um, I can think of a couple industrial examples, uh, as well as some commercial examples. So, uh, being that this is a new build, I'm in agreement.
Although it is a new addition, uh, it is kind of a new build, but...
Yeah.
You're connecting it to what's there.
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
What's the alternative to bring it up to today's standard?
You'd have to do a different material because of so much ephes.
They do.
But have we asked them to, to look at that and what it would look like in a drawing?
Staff did not, no, because we, we had no issue. We were looked at it as, we thought it would be better to just be contiguous.
Yeah.
Have one consistent look across the whole building rather than have one that was primarily, or a lot of ephes, and then one with a lot less ephes or something. The other thing we looked at is this is on the side of the building, furthest away from Lee Victory Parkway. So, it's not going to be as visible from the road really as the existing building either, so that was kind of our thoughts on it.
And if they keep it like it is now, it won't look like an addition. It'll just blend right in like an apartment through every building.
Right, yeah.
If you were to bring it up to, up to today's standards, it would definitely stick out.
Yeah.
I like all the UT elements they put at the front door, too.
Other questions or comments?
Now, we're satisfied with the parking? You said there was some issues with the gravel and...
Yeah, we'll work that out with the applicant. As proposed, for the most recent set of plans, they are showing pavement, and then you got, where the gravel is currently, they're showing that fire apparatus turnaround area back there, and they can also park and fight a fire from the rear of the building as well as part of it. Fire department's okay with that, just need to make it so it's designated a fire lane.
It's actually part of the staff comments here.
Yes.
Yeah. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Okay, have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify, uh, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion carries. Our next, uh, item under site plans is Spartan Raider Smyrna Hotel, Industrial Boulevard Lot 9 Colonial Town Park. Owner, developer, Felicitas Debt Fund LP, Spartan Raider Development Partners LLC.
Yeah, this is a proposed 50,928 square foot four-story hotel. Uh, would be located on Lot 9 within the Colonial Town Park subdivision. On the map, it is north of the, uh, commercial shopping center. We got Kohl's and I believe it's the Dollar General in there as well. Uh, so it's nor, up north of that, tucked nearby the Liverin Property Lot, property boundaries up there. The site would have one access point with the two proposed stubbed streets, which would be stubbing out to the adjoining southeastern tract. That's currently vacant at this time. Vehicle use area for the site, 1.75 acres, and that would require 7,656 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is proposing for 1.19 acres worth landscaping, so they're far exceeding our requirements. Total park required of 118 spaces, and they are showing for 137. Handicap parking space requirement of five, and they're showing for seven. Landscape plan shows trees lining the entrance to the property with additional trees and shrubs proposed throughout the parking areas and along the perimeter of the property as well. Architecture elevations submitted show the building to be built with a mixture of stone, hardy panels, and ephes. As proposed, the elevations do not meet designer view. At least 50% of the building must be finished with a primary material of brick, stone, or glass and glazing. Uh, couple standard comments, all to remain, and we have staff comments. Staff comment one, uh, the proposed re-subdivision plat must be recorded prior to issuance of any permits. So, that's just a, more of a standard comment for them. Comment two, the building is required to be sprinkled and will be required to be reviewed by, reviewed and approved by the State Fire Marshal's Office prior to issuance of a building permit. Comment three, we asked them to show what fire apparatus was used for the auto turn. Uh, just didn't see dimensions on that, so we'd like to, uh, see what dimensions were used for the auto turn. Comment four, to submit architectural elevations showing percentage, uh, shown for each side and the overall building. There are two separate sets of elevations, one of which is different from the colored renderings, uh, and we asked them, which is the actual one that I've proposed for the site? Uh, so to expand on that, I've been in discussion with the applicant, uh, the architect for this project. He recently received these plans as of yesterday afternoon, so they were working on this diligently to try to meet our requirements as far as this is concerned. So, we received the updated site layout, no updated elevations at this time, so they've been working with them. They're working with us on it, trying to get us something back that will meet our requirements at this time. Um, but we don't have anything tonight for you to look at, review, so it's still up in the air as far as what it's going to look like as far as the overall aesthetics purpose of it's concerned. So, uh, comment five regarding landscaping has been addressed, can be removed. Comment six about backflow preventers has been addressed. Comment seven, uh, if there's a commercial kitchen as part of the hotel, a 1,500 gallon grease trap will be required. Comment six, we asked them to show dumpster enclosure elevations, and we expect that to be included as part of the upcoming elevations as well, so that comment has not been addressed yet. Comment six, there are, uh, there were a couple extra parking stalls, or, or six 10-foot by 30-foot parking stalls, and six 12-foot, 9-inch by 30-foot parking stalls that were located near the back of the site. We just asked them to clarify, being they're obviously larger than our normal of nine by 19-foot required parking spaces. So, the 10 by 30, where they're designated as oversized vehicle parking, and then the larger, the 12-foot, 12-foot, 9-inch by 30-foot parking stalls are going to be for trailer use out there for people with, uh, larger loads and such that want to stay there for extended stay purposes. So, just larger stall for them to park their vehicles and fit. So, comment nine can be removed. Comment 10 regarding, uh, a couple spelling errors as far as municipalities that has been addressed. Comment 11 regarding the site data table and information shown, they have done that, so comment 11 can be removed. Comment 12 was, uh, regarding the height of the building, once along, once again goes along with the elevations of this. The most recent elevations we have received do show the building exceeding a 40-foot overall height, which is above what we, our limits are, and anything above that will require H2 for height overlay. As part of that, it's a rezoning more or less, so they'll have to go through that process as well if they keep, wish to keep this building above the 40-foot height restriction. So, with that, comments five, six, nine, 10, and 11 can all be removed. And with that, we would recommend deferral of it to get, just give the applicant some time to submit elevations to us so we get a better idea of what it's going to look like before y'all actually take action on it, and that is our request. Yeah. Yeah.
And I can just say, I don't have the comfort level of proving something of this size without looking at the elevations and making sure it does meet, uh, designer view.
So, I do have a question, and I'm happy to make a motion for it affirmative because I agree with you on that, but it seems just to me to be an odd place for a hotel. From a zoning perspective, is, what are your guys' thoughts on that?
It's, it's allowed as part of the development.
That, that pod did have a hotel, uh, wasn't allowed use in that pod. We actually had, not on this lot, but the lot directly east of it, we actually had a hotel proposed at one time that, for whatever reason, that was never built. I agree, it's a little bit removed, certainly from, uh, most of the, uh, most of the, the interstate, obviously the interchange, uh, where most of the hotels are at. But it is allowed use within the zone, and so it's, it's not something that, other than the height issue, it's really not something we can really say one way or the other, good or bad, um, because it isn't allowed use in that district.
Okay. With that, chairman, I'll make a motion to defer 30 days.
I have a motion to defer, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, uh, and a second to defer for 30 days, further discussion. All those in favor of deferring this item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this item's deferred. Next, we have Talia Trace, 12495 Old Nashville Highway. Owner, developer, Old South Properties.
This is part of the, uh, plat that y'all looked at earlier. This is for the southwestern part of the overall Talia Trace development. The first section does contain 52 of the total 271 townhome units. The entrance to the section is provided via Rocky Fork Road, and no amenities are proposed with this section in the development, but are shown for part of future phases. Vehicle use area for the site, 22,062 square feet, which would require 2,206 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is proposing for 3,425 square feet. Total park required of 104 spaces, which is two per unit. So, through that, we're looking at 178 total spaces. If you include surface of 69 spaces, garage stalls 45 spaces, and driveway for 64 spaces. So, that's how you come up with a total of 178. Handicap is not required as part of this development, but they are showing for one. Landscape plan shows a type C landscape buffer bordering the properties to the east and west, which are Zone R1. Variety of trees and shrubs are shown lining the Collector Road, which is the main entrance off Rocky Fork Road, and continues north throughout the subdivision. Additional shrubs are shown at the base of each unit as well. Architecture elevations submitted show the first floor to be built with brick and the second floor to be built using fiber cement board. As proposed, these elevations are in accordance with the approved PRD. Standard comments all to remain, as well as a couple staff comments. Uh, staff comment one, the final alignment of the sewer main to be determined by the town and the developer. Uh, we're working with the developer on that to come up with a little final alignment. And then comment two, the mail kiosk shall be installed and operational before COs are issued. Uh, so both those comments will remain, and then with that, staff would recommend approval.
Appears to be consistent with what we've previously seen.
Move to approve, staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion. All in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion's approved. Our last item under final plats is Trident Drive Industrial, 8100 Trident Drive. Owner, developer, Foundry Commercial.
So, this is a, uh, three new warehouses are, would be proposed for the end of Trident Drive where it currently terminates. The warehouses are to be 88,400 square feet, 135,200 square feet, and 150,750 square feet in size. The site has floodway, 100-year and 500-year flood planes present on it. The applicant will be required to submit a CLOMR to FEMA for review to alterations due to, to the flood hazard area. The site would have access to the eastern terminus of Trident Drive. Vehicle use area for the site, 8.17 acres, which would require a little over half acre, 0.65 acres for landscaping. They are showing for 1.23 acres worth of landscaping. Total park required of 375 spaces, and they are showing for 410. That does require nine handicap parking spaces, and they are showing for 13. Landscape plan shows variety of trees and shrubs. Landscape plan shows a variety of trees and shrubs lining the parking lot surrounding the developed area of the site. Additional trees are shown within landscape islands and parking lot. Architecture elevations submitted to all buildings to be constructed with tilt-up concrete panels for all four sides of the elevations. Standard comments all to remain, and then a couple staff comments to go over. Comment one regarding utilities, comment regarding the backflow preventers, and that has been addressed, can be removed. Comment two, we asked them to show the 100-year flood plane elevation and submit the required H&amp;H, which is the hydrology and hydraulic study for alteration to the flood hazard area, and the certificate of letter map revision to FEMA for review. Comment three, to show the width of the access drive to be used beyond the cul-de-sac. Is there an existing easement as part of this drive? It is located in the adjoining parcel. To address that comment, the applicant has said that the, there's an agreement included as part of the purchase sale agreement with the property owner that would be addressed at that time when the sale of the property does happen. Comment four, the parking spaces width or parking space length of 19 feet, foot, they were showing 18 foot, and they have revised it to be 19 foot, so that comment can be removed. Comment five, we asked them to submit auto turn for all three buildings. There's a little bit of an issue with auto turn that we have received as far as, staff has reviewed it and fire department has reviewed it. There's several spots in which the truck would not be able to make maneuvers, as shown, comfortable with the fire department, so got a couple extra comments on, on this later as well. So they will need to revise auto turn, all that being said. We asked them to add one additional ADA parking space, they have done so. Comment seven, the drive aisles must be at least 26-foot in width to accommodate for the fire truck to maneuver through the site safely. So that comment will be remaining. The drive lanes are shown at 24-foot, so they do need to be 26-foot to accommodate that. We asked them to show dumpsters, and because they weren't previously shown on site, so they have shown dumpsters, we just need elevations to go alongside with those dumpster. Couple extra comments we had on here as well, after talking to the fire department. Comment nine, we would read, "We would like a letter from the fire, from the sprinkler company for the buildings stating that the one FDC they have shown on the site would be adequate for all three of the buildings. Fire department doesn't think it is, but we'd like a letter from the sprinkler company stating such, so we can verify that, make sure they're all safe to go out there." Comment 10, to show the length of the drive aisle to the north of Building 3, there's a little kind of stub parking area back to the north of Building 3, which is the easternmost building. If it is over 150 foot, they will need a fire truck turnaround out there, not just stub, they can't back up. So just ask them to show a dimension on that, and if it is over 150 foot, to provide that turnaround for the fire truck. And then we'd also like a dimension of the truck to be used on that auto turn as well, and it's just an extra comment to go along with the auto turn comment mentioned earlier. So with that, we got one of two options to be recommended for you. Option A is to recommend approval with the staff comments, and then leave between staff and developer to work through, make sure all, all the fire department concerns have been addressed adequately. Or option B, to recommend deferral, which would give the applicant time to address the fire department concerns, and then have, give staff a little more time to go back and forth, take a look and see what happens with the plans as part of those revisions, and then you all will be able to look at it again before taking action on it. So those are two options that we present to you. Option A is approval, or option B is deferral, gives us more time to take a look at it.
What is the staff's position as far as being able to work through these issues?
I think they've got enough room there, and I think we can, we're fine with working through them. I mean, that's why we made the recommendation as an option. If you all don't feel comfortable with that, that's why we gave you that, you know, we made that recommendation to you all. There's, there's not any issues with regards to the, does that have to be or anything on this one? It's really just that primarily the fire department's concerns about being able to provide adequate turning radius and those kind of things that they need. And everything else is pretty, fairly easy to work through, I think.
I seem to recall that we've had some site plans in the past in which we needed to clean up some items for the fire department, and I think we've worked through them, and chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and if not, we, the development doesn't go forward at that time.
Right.
Are you good with that, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But we usually defer.
It depends on the amount and scope as far as deferral. I think a lot of times we've, we've had issues where we had absolutely zero auto turn or a minimum amount in which we were cutting across parts of a building or into parking spaces and all that, and I'm not hearing that, that severe of a scope. But of course, it's up to the commission on how we want to proceed on this.
If it's just the auto turns, I think we've allowed staff to negotiate that, come back with an agreement. I'm fine with staff doing that.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve of staff comments, including letting staff work through any outstanding auto turn issues to fire department and staff's agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving what staff comments is detailed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. We are now on to mandatory referrals. The first one is SRM Concrete, land donations of the promised Smyrna Hickory Grove Road.
Yeah, this is, as a part of the approval for the pod, for cornerstone at Smyrna, the developer, which is SRM Concrete, was required to donate two acres for a public safety building. They have identified the area to be donated, which is on the west side of Hickory Grove Road, beginning approximately 250 feet from Jefferson Pike. A plat crediting this lot is currently being done. We don't have the, that plat yet, so we don't know the exact boundary quite yet, but this is, we know the general vicinity. The parcel is not currently within town limits, so once we get that plat, we will proceed to annex that property as well as that existing roadway, Hickory Grove Road. We didn't, not annex at the time of the pod was annexed, so we do, we'll need to clean that up as well. The planning commission is required to review any acquisition of land by the town and find whether or not it is in keeping with the adopted comprehensive plan and make that recommendation to the council, so staff would recommend approval of this request.
Any questions for staff? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, mandatory referral is approved. We are now on to the July bond review.
Yeah, we've got a few this month. First one, Villages, Section 2. This is the end of their maintenance period. They had a few things to clean up and need the ASBILs is all that's really left. Did not hear back from that developer, representative, prior to the packets, so still haven't heard from him. We would recommend release on that if they can get all that done. If not, we would just need to extend it for six more months. Hopefully they can get that to us, and we can release that one because everything is essentially done. Creeksone Village, this is the one we have had some issues with as far as, quite a bit still to be done, and the developer will tell me, "Yeah, I'll get you an update," and then I never hear back from him. This, this is one that we really need to get done. However, I'm not, I'm not ready to recommend you call it yet. I do want at least give them the summer to get this done, so we are recommending a three-month extension here, but based on past performance, I don't know if we're going to get any luck, but I do want to at least give them the summer to try to get that done. So much prefer he finish it than the town finish it for him. Okay, Haven Estates, that's the end of the maintenance period on that one. We did send, we went ahead, they asked for it, and I did go ahead and send them the punch list, and there's a couple just minor utility issues. We've got the ASBILs, so I feel pretty confident they'll get that done by August 4th, and we can probably go ahead and release that one. We did say extend six months if they're not, but I feel pretty confident we'll be able to extend, or release that one, rather. Sundell, Section 1, again, it's the end of that maintenance period, same recommendation there. If they can get those remaining three items done, be okay with releasing that one, otherwise Buckingham Place, Section 1, Phase 2, and Woodcrest 3 are both the same developer, same general area. So again, both of those are the end of the maintenance period and would recommend release if they can get done, otherwise we would need to extend those six more months to finish those up, so. That's the bond report.
Questions for staff concerning the bond report? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the bond report.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bond report. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the bond report is approved. Staff comments?
I don't have anything else.
Anything from the commission? Stand adjourned.